Good evening, everybody. Welcome to sunny June day, June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. This is a regular.
Excuse me.
Well, yeah, that's your thanks for a morning, so I thought, does it carry that?
Regular council meeting for June eighteenth, twenty twenty four. I would like to make a couple amendments to the agenda. So if we can move municipal officer designation, Director of Protective Services, John Smith, up to number four on the agenda. And we will move Jordan Stackhouse, guess, up to number five on the agenda. And if all is in favor, can I at least have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I'll second. Councilor Hunter, then Councilor Burris, all in favor? Carrie? Danielle, if I don't hear from you, that'll, I'll just assume that's an eye, okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, first on our agenda today, we have the minutes from the regular meeting of June fourth, twenty twenty four.
I'll adopt the minutes from the meeting of June fourth, twenty twenty four.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Burris and Councilor Hunter. Any questions or comments?
Not moving, thank you.
No.
Okay, all in favor? Carrie. Uh, motion for the payables in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I'll make a motion to pay the payables.
All right, listen. Thank you. Uh, questions or comments?
So a couple, um, they're just big ones. Uh, one, three, four, three.
Uh, that's for West Peak Projects, um, that is for the public lease drop-off projects.
And then, uh, six, two, three, seven, five.
New North Trucking Equipment is for our new water truck.
Shannon, can you just go through some of the big ones? That would be great. Thanks. Or maybe that's what you're reading.
That's what we're doing, Danielle. Just give us.
Okay, perfect.
We just did, uh, West Peak, and now we did six, two, three, seven, five, which is New North Trucking Equipment, just a water truck. And then, uh, uh, six, two, three, eight, eight.
Uh, that's for Engine Repair for Unit thirty-two.
Um, and six, two, three, nine, six.
That was probably. Oh, that is, uh, United Way funding we received for the seniors, so that was paid. Giving them the, the funding we received, just in the end of our project.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Thank you, Councilor Burris. So it's a mess.
Same questions. Uh, the only other bigger ones were, um, HVAC tech, which was fair amount. Six, two, three, nine, one, and JR Carpentry, which is six, two, three, nine, two.
Uh. So I'll have to get back to you on the HVAC tech. I don't have that in front of me.
Good.
Uh, but JR Carpentry was for, um, the Skilpin Project as a recreation center, and we will be reimbursed by YG for that.
Perfect. Okay, no other questions? All in favor? Carrie. All right, number four on our agenda, we have the Municipal Officer Designation, Director of Public Services, John Smith. Welcome. Very happy to have you.
I'm here. It's, uh, you know, we've had a run of, uh, Fire Chiefs over the last little while, and, uh, it's a big role to fill. And, uh, we're, we have some high expectations, but don't be nervous. Now, it's been, uh, we, uh, we've had some great people to fill that role, and under certain circumstances, they had to leave. Don't call them anybody's. So, uh, yeah, we're happy to have you, and, uh, you enjoy Watson Lake. Like, you timed it pretty well, finally getting some nice weather, so. Without further ado, I'll just ask Tiffany to help you out, and it should be quick and famous.
Uh, John? So I was getting to read your oath of commitment aloud.
Hi, John Anthony Smith, in the town of Watson Lake in the UConn Territory. Just I only promise to declare that. But I will well and truly serve as a designated municipal officer in the position of Director of Protective Services for the Town of Watson Lake with their favor or affection, malice or ill will. That I will honor and respect the mission, goals, purpose, and principles of the Town of Watson Lake. And that while I continue to hold the said position of Director of Protective Services, I will, to the best of my skill and knowledge, discharge all the duties and responsibilities thereof faithfully and according to the law.
So if you agree with that statement, I'll give you the sign, please. Professional?
Yep, thank you. Thanks, John. I guess, oh, by, go ahead. Do you have any questions?
No.
Or you have a motion? Okay.
I'm gonna figure that, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm ready. Carrie, on this.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint John Smith as a designated municipal officer for the Town of Watson Lake in the role of Director of Protective Services and rescind all other designated municipal officers that held the role of Director of Protective Services for Fire Chief for the Town of Watson Lake.
I'll second. Councilor Hunter, then Councilor Burris, all in favor?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll see you around.
I'm ready. Thanks.
Okay, next on our agenda, Housing Accelerator Fund, Jordan Stackhouse.
Hey, everyone. How's it going? Nice to see you, uh, back once again with the Housing Accelerator. Can you hear me? Is everything okay?
Yeah, I can hear you. You're just small on our screen, and I want to see your face.
All right, we'll move a little bit closer. Sorry. I, anyways, it doesn't matter. Uh, kids crazy, just getting my camera set up, so not ideal for tonight. I apologize. Um, basically, uh, we're here tonight to talk about, uh, the communications and engagement plan that council had asked us to tackle, uh, for the Housing Accelerator Fund. I believe you have that report in your guys' package, but I could also share my screen. Um, maybe. And, oh, oh, actually, real, real quick, I'll just show you how the, um, brochure turned out. This should be in like the mail, like today or tomorrow. Hey, Alex, how's it going? Um, Alex is going to talk about the, um, the communications plan, but I'll just show you this brochure anyways. So this went out, uh, is going out of the mail today or tomorrow. We got it all professionally designed, um, as per council's direction. We added some numbers in here. Um, just answering like all the basic questions of the who, when, where, why of the Housing Accelerator Fund program. So that will be in, in the, uh, residences, uh, residence mailbox, like tomorrow, hopefully, or today even. We were told today or tomorrow by Canada Post, so just wanted to let you guys know that that's done. Um, and that's our first communications piece, uh, that's come out of that. Um, sorry, I didn't mean to do that. And then if I could just share this comms report with you. Um, I'll go through just our report that we wrote, um, just kick, give council a bit of context on this, and then Alex can just dive into the particulars, uh, for you guys. Um, while Alex is on the screen, uh, I'll let you, you guys all know Alex, right? No one loves Alex.
Hey, everyone.
Former, uh, former YG, um, Community Services, um, Community Advisor, who's supporting this project. And we're like really lucky to have Alex working on this, because she just brings a ton of strength in a lot of areas, but especially, uh, the communications and, um, engagement, which, uh, we're here to talk about tonight. So, um, basically, our note says, we're here to present this communication strategy. Um, can, uh, Alex will take you through it. I wanted to just mention, um, we've just identified an additional budget um, to support, I guess, these communications initiatives that we have, um, within the, within the report that Alex is going to present. Um, just a couple of important facts there, like we've asked for a very like healthy, generous budget to complete this work. Um, just, it's meant to span over the next, I guess, until the end of twenty twenty-six. Um, it's, it's meant to be enough money so that we don't like have to come back to council if we need like a little top-up or something like that. And it's meant to cover kind of all the communications and engagement support that we feel like we'll need over the length of the, um, agreement. And, uh, the, like, the majority of this money is not to pay for our time or consultant's time, it's production costs. So designers, printing, um, materials, mailing, that kind of thing. Um, and so, you know, it's council's prerogative if, if they feel like that's too much money or not enough. Um, but we did just kind of want to put in enough of a budget to make sure that we didn't have to come back to council all the time and just bother you with those kind of details, like, oh, we need five thousand dollars for this or that. So, um, again, it's a hundred percent, uh, funded by the Housing Accelerator Fund, so no, uh, no funds coming directly from the Town of Watson Lake. Um, does support council's priorities of housing, economic development, private sector development. And, uh, you guys, I'm sure, know all about the fund, so I don't need to tell you that we got, uh, you guys got just over two million dollars, and we're trying to implement a number of initiatives, uh, from that program. So with that, Alex, do you want to share your screen so you can go through it, Alex, and then I don't have to do that?
You know, actually, if you don't mind, Jordan, because you already have it up, might be easier. It's only a few pages, so, great. Um, hi, everyone. Nice to see you all again in my new role. Um, excited to be getting back to some communications, which was the work I did before Community Affairs for quite a while, so, yeah, I'll dive right in. So the objective of this is to communicate the fact that this is a really exciting opportunity for the Town of Watson Lake. It's a really good news story, so I think that, you know, notwithstanding that there weren't communications at the onset, going forward, it's something that most people should be really excited about. It's tackling an identified need and addressing council's priorities. So, um, the po, the general outlook is positive and with the understanding that, um, we're inviting people to learn more because they'll be interested, because it's going to benefit everyone. The target audience is the residents of Watson Lake, um, pretty standard for government communications. You're speaking to all of the people that vote for you. So, um, I've heard from Jordan and heard from other people too, that the town of, the residents of Watson Lake are very engaged. So they will have high expectations for communication and public input, and they'll be interested in seeking out this information. So that makes our job a little easier in the communications. We need to make it clear and accessible. So, um, the key messages will be the, the kind of tone that you set for everybody going forward. That's what you will mostly be speaking to in your public communications. It's a celebratory tone. Um, by the way, feel free to just raise your hand or interrupt me if you have any questions while I'm going through this. But, uh, after I do this brief kind of overview, we can chat at the end as well. So, yeah, I've got the four key messages for the majority of residents. It's kind of an overview of what half is and why it's exciting. Um, and then I won't go through the whole stakeholder analysis because you have it, but there are several, um, people both within the Town of Watson Lake and neighbors that will have other interests. Um, you know, if they want to access some of the funding, there's some messaging for them, people who are really feeling a crunch of housing, messaging for them. And then also the LFN government and residents, while not members of the Town of Watson Lake. Uh, in some cases, I know there are residents who live in Watson Lake, but, um, you know, being neighborly, communicating about this with them as well is also covered. So you've got that. And then where I'll delve more into it is the communication methods. Because we expect that people will be interested in learning more about this, uh, the website is really the standout piece of communication. And it's also something I noticed in your OCP, I went through it briefly, and it's noted that you need a housing section as one of your action items in your housing section. So that is one of the first things that the communications plan suggests we should do. Uh, I've gone over what it will include here, and, you know, looking for some direction on whether that would be under the government tab, the community tab, or if you want it to be a standalone section. I know this is a really big initiative, so that's where I'd be leaning. But if council has any insight, I'd be happy to take that back. Or if, um, any of your staff have insight onto where people tend to browse on your website, we could also go, go with that. But, yeah, the website is certainly probably the most urgent piece of information to get out. And sorry, I'm saying website, webpage on watsonlake.ca. So that will be where all of the other communications will also direct folks to go. So like the brochure that Jordan showed you, everything is kind of linking to the webpage, say, if you, like, this is a snippet of the information, learn more here. Facebook would be used in the same way to promote any exciting messages. Lottery, for example, would be where you post about Facebook, try and drive interest, but you always link back to the website, because that's where people would find more information. Uh, other than the online stuff, because we know that not everybody's online, the brochure was a great idea. Getting people where they are, uh, makes a lot of sense. You know, you're reaching every resident with a field box in Watson Lake. So that's gone out. It's the overview, quick snapshot of what is to come. And to complement that, um, I've suggested fact sheets, because the, there are five initiatives, and there's a lot to know about each different initiative that couldn't be captured in one brochure. So the fact sheets would be something to create as the initiatives roll out, and maybe do a mailer type of product with those as well. And then have the, these and the initial brochure available for download on your webpage. Um, the other thing that I'd looked at is your town crier. Um, I'm not sure if the Town of Watson Lake is interested in reviving that, because I saw on your website, it hasn't really been active in the last few years. But if we're wanting an opportunity to really promote the success stories, maybe highlight somebody who has accessed the funding. Um, it's a really good opportunity, so I put that in there for your consideration. Uh, I know Watson Lake is really good about direct contact, and that obviously council meetings are somewhere where the public's always invited. They can hear this conversation, learn more through that. And also the town halls, I've, I understand they're very well attended. People bring their questions, people are ready to talk about them, so. Happy to support with materials for that, key messages, anything that you would need to help those town halls run smoothly, because that's a great avenue to reach people again, especially those that aren't online. And then everybody's favorite, the media relations. Um, the, I think this is a great opportunity to celebrate the exciting things that are happening in Watson Lake. And it makes sense to have news releases issued whenever there's something celebratory happening, like when the lottery takes place and people are awarded funds through your grant program. Uh, I'm also proposing doing a wrap-up each April to say what has been achieved, because we know that the half is moving really quickly. So I think looking back after a year, there will be a lot to talk about. So I'd propose doing that, um, each year. And then I'd also provide key messages and FAQs for that, because I expect there'd be some media attention coming after those. And then with that media attention, I've also outlined your spokespeople. Um, I know the mayor is typically the spokesperson for things like this, and you've already been the spokesperson marrying for, for the half so far. Seen your quotes a few times, so that would be what I would suggest going forward, but also making the CIO, uh, project manager and the technical expert in lands, Graham, available for some of those more in-person things, or to speak when residents have questions, that type of thing. So, yeah, really putting the mayor up front, or the deputy mayor when the case may be, and then other folks as needed. Uh, an environmental scan just goes over what has been done so far, so that's a little bit about the fact that people are wanting more communication and that they're interested in accessing funds and some of the challenges with getting communication out initially, just due to really tight timelines. But then, given the fact that it's really a positive news story, we're expecting, you know, the brochure will likely be well-received, and then we'll be able to continue to focus on the good news going forward as we roll out more communications. Uh, again, there's been one media event in Watson Lake so far, and this also links to your priorities as a council for economic development, housing, and private sector development. And evaluation and follow-up basically just talks about how you have an engaged community. We hope to utilize your staff and what they're hearing to communicate with us about how the communications are going. If people are coming with a certain type of question, we'll know there's an area to address. We'll also monitor your social media, seeing if there's anything that people are raising often, so that we know where to pivot, and, uh, just being prepared to increase communication as needed. Um, but really monitoring what people are saying in person and online. As Jordan mentioned, the, but anticipated budget is forty-five thousand. And for the approvals and timelines, we would, uh, so you've already gotten started. You've had the initial in, uh, town hall meeting and the announcement with CMHC. The brochure was mailed out. Next is the webpage to get that developed and launched, and I expect that to be pretty quick. So looking to get something live by early July. Um, and then fact sheets will be developed after that. They can be mailed out as the initiatives are coming forward, and they can be uploaded to the website as soon as they're ready. Um, news releases, town hall meetings, and everything else will be ongoing as the initiatives roll out. And then there will be that annual half progress report. One thing, though, that I should have noted in this is CMHC does have a thirty-business-day timeline for notifications about any public communications so that they can, um, let their ministers know and potentially be included, which probably just looks like a logo or maybe a quote in the case of a news release. So we do have a meeting set up with them to, um, discuss the communications plan once that is approved. And then going forward, we'll just make sure we do everything within that thirty-day timeline. We might ask them for the, for a little bit of a push forward on the website if that's available, because we want to get that out as soon as possible. But other than that, I think it should be fairly straightforward to just send them an email, let them know about our planned communications. Oh, and, uh, last thing, we will require the CAO's written sign-off just before we release everything. I think that about sums it up. So if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Yeah, I'll just add, thank you very much, Alex, for that. It's pretty comprehensive, and I think like, uh, you know, it's a good start. It's responding to, you know, what we've heard from the community, like, there's a couple of things, you know, I think we, we should be aware of, like, over-engagement's also a possibility, right? Over-communication. Um, you know, the fact that we are kind of in the summertime, it's not the greatest time to reach out to people. Um, council has an election upcoming, so there's also a lot of pressures and, and kind of threading the needle, I guess, on, on some of these initiatives. And so, um, you know, like, I think as we, as we move forward to like new ideas and will emerge, and, and we'll need to be prepared to kind of like iterate, um, as we go, like, we have, like, with basically this whole process. Um, building the plane as we're flying it, uh, we've been saying that a lot, and, you know, I, I hope what council sees here, um, you know, gives us some confidence in that we have a good idea of like how we want to move forward with these initiatives and su, support this process a little bit more, um, just like a little bit more delicately with like communications and engagement with the community. Thank you.
Thank you both for that, and it's excellent. I think this, uh, is a great draft for, uh, for what we need to present to the community and, and farther. I think it's great, I really appreciate you addressing, uh, LFN in some of this communication, as well as business owners. I think that, um, I personally would love to see a, a tab of its own on housing on our website. I think that would be beneficial. You know, when the agency maybe is like a contact page, you know, or something very blank, like, if that's something you guys are willing to do, or it's be like the, a contact, or if you want that contact to go straight to the municipality. But I think, uh, also with that budget, it seemed, it, it, it's healthy, but I do see a lot of work here. So I think that, uh, I think it looks great.
I agree.
Thank you, Councilor Hunter. Thanks, Dylan. Um, do you guys have any questions?
Um, I just, when you were talking about the webpage, I was curious, is that like a completely separate webpage, or is that just a section in our existing, what, website?
Section or existing tab, yeah, the tab, it would be.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yeah, we, 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 we kind of, uh, threw on the idea of doing a, a separate website and just, it, uh, the values, I guess, like, not there. Um, you know, and it, it's kind of better, just in the way that I guess we need to retain records and work with the staff as well. That's going to be the best way to do it for all, like, the kind of team to work together on something, yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree. I just, yeah, cool.
Sounds good. I like the tabs.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think it needs to be linked to the town website, because I think that's where people will be looking for the information. But you guys have done a lot of work, so thank you. It looks great.
Awesome. Well, I'm really happy council's pleased with the work so far. Um, I think, uh, we, you, are you guys on a committee meeting tonight or a council meeting?
Uh, we are regular, we're not assuming.
Yeah, you guys can make a motion to accept this draft report, uh, if you'd like, or we could, we could look at some changes. Um, you know, I knew, I, I do want to just address in the name of, uh, you know, financial transparency, just to address the, the request for, uh, half-funding to support the communications. Um, it, it, it is really healthy, and it's, I, I don't imagine at all that we're going to come close to spending all that um, at all, but it's, it's just so it's there. Um, and of course, all, all, all spending needs to be authorized by, um, CAO, so, um, yeah, it's just so we have it. Thank you.
Yeah. Then I get a motion to accept the admin report draft half comms report. I'll make that motion to accept the draft half comms report.
I'll second that.
Thank you, councilors, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. I'll read it again. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate all of our work.
No worries. You guys have a good night, and we'll be, uh, we'll be back in touch.
You bet.
I'll take care. Thank you.
Lovely. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have number six, which is the admin report for the rec center kitchen upgrades. I have the admin reports, and I will read it. Proposed, okay, so we have an admin report created from administration to combine for the rec center kitchen, the kitchen renovation update. The purpose of this administrative report is to provide council with information about rec center hall and kitchen renovation tender. Uh, financial, financial implications, uh, eight hundred thousand dollars was budgeted in the twenty twenty-four capital budget for this project. Two tenders for rec center hall and kitchen renovation project were released on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, and closed on June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. One tender was the kitchen equipment, and the other was construction work. There were five bids received for the kitchen equipment, and one bid received in the cus, construction work. The bid received for the construction portion of the project came in substantially higher than cost estimates, and the bids for the kitchen equipment were slightly higher than the cost estimates. As the tender results are significantly higher, expected are options to consider on how council would like to move forward. And in your package, you can see those five options. Uh, option A being recommended. Would you like to, we need to read those options, or can we discuss them?
Can you read the recommended one?
Sure. The recommended op, option A is to cast the tender but use negotiated procurement approach with the sole bidder. So in hindsight, like, just negotiate with them. To see if there wasn't a miscommunication, make sure they've got their form in properly, make sure everything's falls in line with what we budgeted for, because.
Yes, in case there was a mistake.
There could have, because this came in so much.
But would that come back to council before it moved ahead?
It would have to, yes.
E, okay.
Yes. We would have to, they would, we would still seek approval. This is just asking, this is basically a request to negotiate or communicate with that sole bidder to ensure that they've done what they can on that bid.
Okay.
From my understanding, this, this, that's a much.
In that case, I will make a motion to direct administration to use a negotiated procurement approach with the sole bidder of the construct, construction tender.
Thank you, answer.
I'll second that.
Do you have any, sorry, Councilor Burris, go, all in favor?
Hi. Uh, the only other question I have with that, though, is with the, uh, equipment part of it. Um, I, I know we sort of approved what was going in there, but I just mislooked or something, like, they're trying to put in a walk-in coolers, which is a super expensive cost. Like crazy expensive, um, just no, from personal experience, and just going through a big problem with ours. And like, I don't know, if, like, if it could be cost, it's a, uh, I think there's better options to not go that route, for how much it's going to be used. So I, I, I use just a misstep for me. I just did relays for trying to put in a walking. Like, you can get, uh, like, uh, double door coolers on wheels for like two thousand dollars.
Fracture of the cost.
Yeah. So I don't know, it's just something that maybe we can get them to look into.
Well, maybe we'll ask, uh, administration that if this bid is solid. Well, maybe we'll ask, uh, administration that if this bid is solid, is not, please not, uh, completed, or if we don't get it, you know, uh, a good conversation going with the procurement of that, that bidder, that we can relook at some of those costs such as the walking coolers, such as some of the features that we're trying to change in the rec center so that we can either lower that price.
To make up for the other price. Like somewhere just make up the money at first anyways and that one's way high. I mean, you can lose some of the equipment to make it up.
Yeah. I'd have to look at some of the changes that can be made to satisfy the cost with the change.
Cause like refrigeration, just for instance, like, uh, like c- container of it, it's like ten grand each.
Hmm.
So if you have a problem, that's ten grand instantly.
Yeah. Whereas sometimes those stunned home units have a lot smaller, uh, capacity for those and they don't require so much refrigeration. Yeah, for sure. And I think, I think too, we might have missed, I don't know how, but I feel like we didn't have a good thorough conversation on what those rec center designs that.
Well, because we had the design, like it was, but it was just sort of like, it's just like, I don't know. Yeah, I, I, that's what it feels like to me. I'm sort of blind still.
Do you recall that, Counselor Hunter?
I mean, I recall us talking about it. I recall us giving our opinion.
I don't know.
But I suppose it was just only that one time.
I just missed something. I, like, that just, I, I, yeah, I must have missed it, but I don't know. I think we should look into that at some point before we go ahead.
Well, this is coming back, what, we coming back to council for approval anyway?
Yeah, that's true. It just for.
But I mean, I just thought we did that before.
Well, unfortunately, I, I'm going to make a huge assumption that by the time we negotiate this situation and have to come back to council and approve and change or whatever it might be that this, some of this project that was slated for the summer is not going to happen. So fortunately it will have to be followed on the next, you know, so. Yeah, sure.
I wasn't given any specs in respect to the, um, kitchen. So, because I just had Tiffany emailed me, um, the information for council because I wasn't able to open my tablet, um, to receive council. So I don't know exactly what you guys are talking about, but I agree. I was, I don't remember us having a specific conversation as to what everything was going into that kitchen either. We had, we got some diagrams, but I don't think we received anything else that I remember.
However, if, uh, there's direct communication back with that sole bidder and looking to move things forward, then let's, let's make that happen. Thank you, Counselor Pickett. Counselor Burris, is there any other questions or comments?
We've not heard any. Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have the first and second reading of the community services grant by law, twenty twenty-four oh seven.
I'll make a motion for our first and second reading of bylaw twenty twenty-four dash zero seven for our community services grants.
That was seven. Could you, thank you. All in favor? Next on our agenda, we have the second and third, second, third and final.
Second and third are just, I don't know if you read it. Like third and finals and same.
Oh, right. It's the, thank you. Second, third and final reading of the twenty twenty-four municipal election by law.
Sorry, I don't know if I just didn't hear this as well. Um, well, that was the final. That's just for you. Oh, okay. I didn't know that. Sorry. Okay, sorry. I thought we missed something with the community service grant.
Got everything, right? Okay. There's no admin report for that. We didn't want to make any changes to salaries. We're pretty sure that it's going to be carried over to YG after this point. So we are okay with that by law as it stands. So let's will simply move it forward.
Make motion to do the second and third and final reading of the two thousand and twenty-four municipality election by law.
Thank you, Counselor Burris.
We'll second that.
Thank you, Counselor Hunter. All in favor? Carol. Next on our agenda, we have the third and final reading of zoning amendment by law, twenty twenty-four oh five.
I'll make a motion for every final.
Thank you, Counselor Hunter. Thank you, Counselor Burris. All in favor? Last but not least, for the bylaw section, we have the third and final reading of the wild feeding of wild animals by law, twenty twenty-four dash zero two.
I'll make the motion, the third and final reading, the feeding of wild animals by law, twenty twenty-four dash zero two.
I'll now second that.
Thank you, Counselor Burris. Thank you, Counselor Hunter. And that moves us on to Counselor Open Form.
Well, we're.
Oh, did you want to go? No, you don't do, see, all in favor? That was a lot of bylaws.
It was a lot worthy.
Thank you, council. Good job. Uh, yeah, so.
Thank you, admin.
Thanks. Thank you, admin. Sure, we'll see that on the bylaw in a minute. Uh, next on our agenda, we have the council open forum. Any questions from council? Anything?
None, I mean, no.
No, no.
Any updates from the Clinton?
Um, it's looking like the pool will open tomorrow, so.
Certainly.
Um, and other than that, uh, just projects were proceeding around town, um, as scheduled, um, nothing, there were quite a few trees that came down today, so we've been working on that. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Let's be going along. And we will have the town crier, the list, right? Yes. Next week, hopefully, possibly.
Nice.
Maybe we can look at the, the housing is already fun to fund the next town crier in the follow-up for the fall. What's the accelerated fund information is? Excellent. Uh, no question for me. No questions, Counselor Burris? Counselor Pickett, any questions for Councilor Open Form?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Counselor Hunter.
Do you have any, many community services here? No. I guess I was just wondering, um, I was under the impression that they were going to have some sort of campaign, you know, encouraging people to run for municipal government and I just haven't seen that yet, so.
They were supposed to.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure community services is working on some sort of campaign to, you know,
Encourage.
inspire people to put their name over.
Is that, do you want the date for their elections?
I'm pretty sure town said, um, that nominations are mid-September and I'm not sure if they open or close that date, if it's September sixteenth or something. And then the actual election is October seventeenth.
Maybe this is.
Yeah, that pulls off over ten and.
Right there, yeah.
All right.
Did you write that down?
Is that your elections?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're not even listening.
All right. So then we don't have anything for, uh, new camera this evening, so call for it, Jordan.
I'll make a motion to, Jerry.
I'll send it, Counselor Hunter, from Counselor Burris. All in favor? Do that.
Good night.
Thanks. Everybody, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.